The time is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 5th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. Up first on our agenda, our city update, so Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, Mayor Gratazar. I just have a couple of updates this evening. And one is just to share with you that our, our internal State Fair Float Parade Committee rocked this year with trophies at both the State Fair Parade. And then this past Sunday at the Fiesta Day Parade took the judges' choice trophy. So the committee of general service employees, volunteers, mid-management, management team, they, they were creative, they worked together, they flipped that float in about five days. They're tearing it down today. They got to get back to work tomorrow, but they did a great job. And the floats were award-winning, as you saw them go by. Second, I wanted to get, bring back, next week we'll do it, the, the actual budget calendar. So you could, if you'd look at those dates over the week for the budget work sessions, particularly those that, you know, that would go back to back in one week if that's going to work for council. Or if you'd like to do something different this year, we have sufficient time to get them all scheduled. But as your work sessions get filled up, we want to make sure and get them on the calendar for five, six weeks in advance. And then lastly, I, I just wanted to brag a little bit about the CML District Meeting coming up. It is on your, your work, your schedule of advance. It's Friday, September the 22nd. I attended last year's with Councilman Atencio in La Vida, and they sort of threw down the gauntlet that said, you know, Pueblo can't possibly be better next year. Well, wait till this group gets here. They come from Alamoso, Walsenburg, Pueblo, Canyon City, you know, the, the southern area. But we were so fortunate with our sponsors. Hub is sponsoring at lunch and the, and the meeting is at Brew's. We have sponsorship for an afternoon of activities. Harp's going to sponsor all the attendees for a boat ride. It is the Chile Free Holiday Festival start at three o'clock, and the Chamber is sponsoring their tickets to get in the, in the gate fee for the Chile Free Holiday Festival. So, Mr. President, I think that they're going to be sorry, they're going to have to eat their words. Good day for Pueblo. I don't have any other updates this evening. Are there questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Mr. Atencio.
Yeah, how far are we along on that mural on the east side with Eric Saraceno?
Thank you. The contract for personal services is with the Parks Department. They will do the personal service contract and our city attorney will do the ARPA agreement. I think it's next up on the agenda coming in September.
Okay, good.
I believe it's September 11th.
Good.
Other questions? Counselor Maestri?
Oh, I have a question for Mr. Hypolite. Hi. I noticed, because they didn't really give us too much of a background of where you came from, but I noticed that you served as Assistant City Attorney for the City of Denver.
One of many, yes.
Yes. Under whose administration?
Mayor Hancock's.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I just want to reiterate, Ms. Solano's, congratulations to our general service employees. Both parade floats were beautiful. We, I mean, we swept in all category, in that specific category, and it was all led by BJ Aragon. So thank you so much, BJ, for your hard work in leading the team of general service employees. I'm curious, Ms. Solano, if we have any updates with our lobbyist RFP?
Good question. I'm just today, I was going to talk to the city attorney so we'd get that RFP, scope of work out of the last year's contract and get it out the door. Would, would, would council, would you like to see the, the scope of work electronically? I think the city attorney would forward that once we get that drafted, too.
Mr. Hypolite?
We, we can, if that's what council would wish.
Yeah, I, I think that that would be great. I just want to make sure that we're not in another time crunch, I guess. Because I know that last year it was a little bit of a time crunch with like February, and then all of a sudden we had to go to RFP. So I just want to make sure that we're planning for RFP before the session begins.
I'll make sure to try to get you a preliminary schedule when we send the scope of work.
Great. Well, congratulations again to our general service employees and BJ Aragon for that huge win. Other questions or concerns for Ms. Solano seeing none? Then we're going to welcome our friends from the Public Community Health Center up to the podium to get, give an update for PCHC. Mr. Moore, either one. And this is a generalized PCHC update.
So would drive?
Yeah, you drive. And then you want to make sure your mic is back when you're done.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for inviting me. I'm, I'm always eager to tout the health center's role in the community. My name is Donald Moore. I'm the CEO of the Health Center. I've been with the Health Center since 1999 and since 2009 as its CEO. I, I think most people generally know about the Community Health Center, but I always like to highlight a couple of core things about how we operate. This is our 40th year of service to the community. Our mission is to provide primary healthcare to those in need. And our scope of services is a comprehensive and integrated and includes medical care, dental care, and mental health care. We also have a variety of associated services such as pharmacy and prenatal care, for example, that complement that, that triad of core services. No one has refused service due to an inability to pay at the point of service. We're able to do that with some significant federal grant funding that we have. So our, our unique role in the community is to make sure that, that people that don't have choices or limited options for care do have a place to go and, and that finances are not a barrier to accessing quality care. Pueblo can be proud of the fact that PCHC is ranked in the top 10% of community health centers nationwide in terms of quality. There are 1,400 community health centers in every state, territory in the United States. And we submit data every year, and objectively speaking, we perform in the top 10% versus our peers. And our peers take care of a similar target population. And then finally, important to note that our Board of Directors is comprised of a majority of patients of the Health Center. These are individuals who utilize PCHC as their regular and usual trusted source of, of primary healthcare. So we have a dynamic of the governance of the organization, the oversight of the organization, where the consumers of the service are overseen and making sure the Health Center is accountable for its mission and charitable purpose, which is, as I said, access to quality healthcare. Couple of highlights of community impact. Our target population, and we're talking, you know, 90, 95% of those that we serve live in households at 200% of poverty level or below. And if you look back 18 months from today, we've served one out of seven Puebloans, about 28,000 people. With the cessation of the pandemic, our, our activity was really depressed during the pandemic. People just weren't coming in for their routine care like they were outside the pandemic. We are, we are seeing our activity starting to grow significantly. We went as low as like 23,000 patients during the pandemic. We hit 26,000 last year. I think we're going to go through 27,000 this year. And we're planning on even more access in 2024. One out of three babies is delivered by our midwives and doctors at Parkview Medical Center. And we have a significant impact on the local economy. We have a $38 million budget, 75% of which is personnel expenses. That's normal in the healthcare sector. All those people live locally and spend that paycheck locally. We have 340 people on payroll. And an economic study that was done by our state association shows that there's $75 million of secondary and tertiary economic activity generated in Pueblo due to the operation of the Health Center. And then finally, because we are focused on preventative care and primary care, we are associated with a savings of $43 million of, of spending that was avoided by people having access to preventative and primary care. All right, in, in the past couple of years, the major milestone in the life of the Health Center was the opening of our East Side Clinic. And I, I think most people know about that development. I always feel like a picture is worth a thousand words, and I believe you had access to this presentation in advance. So just highlight a couple of things. This, this is a, a image of the building that is operational. We opened January 2022. So we've been open for a year and a half. We had the groundbreaking May of 2022, once the weather got nicer for us. So that was a, a nice event. This perspective here is looking across the football field at Rizley Middle School to the entire south-facing edifice of, of the building. You, you can see that it's a modern-looking building, but it also reflects Pueblo in that there's a lot of brick on the building. And we think, you know, our, our approach was to integrate with the community. We think we did a pretty good job of that. I, I want to note that 100% of the brick was produced here locally at, at Summit Brick. Our board in awarding the, the contract, I, about like 85% of the subcontract dollars, it was a $24 million project, went to local subcontractors here in Pueblo. The reason it wasn't 100% is because some of the trades didn't, there weren't local trades that bid on the contract. So we had to go out of town. So our board has pride in, in supporting the community for sure. Dignity and respect is our core values for the Health Center. That's the way we want to treat patients. It's the way we expect employees to treat each other and our visitors to the Health Center. This is a modern facility. It, it's one of the nicest healthcare facilities from a primary care perspective that I think anyone would have the ability to access. And you can see that we prioritized having the space be open, well-lighted, and, you know, not a, a sardine can type, type approach. This is on our second floor. Again, you can see it's well-lit and open. With the opening of the East Side Clinic, we expanded our dental operation. We are currently operating pretty much the only dental access on the east side. You have to go up into Belmont, or you have to go to the south side to, to access dental care. And again, we don't turn anybody away due to inability to pay. So we are, literally have doubled the number of staff and the number of appointments we have available for the community who are in need of dental care and fully staffed to be able to do that. We had a tremendous response to our capital campaign. I want to thank council and, and the mayor for awarding $250,000 to the Health Center as a part of the CBG, CDBG process. Laura, thank you also for your support of that. And that went directly into the direct costs of bringing this, this facility online. Couple of things, not germane necessarily to the delivery of healthcare, but important aspects of the project from the perspective of our board. This is a snapshot of a press release from 2017 after council passed a resolution concurrent with the county commissioners to start moving Pueblo towards 100% use of renewable energy. And I, you know, Pueblo is definitely leading this area. We have several significant projects, and that, I think the Health Center is doing their part. This is a clip from a website called New Buildings Institute. New Buildings Institute tracks all sustainable building projects around the, around the country, specifically net zero projects. Net zero is when the building produces more energy than it consumes on an annual basis. And they have a public database. You can go to the New Building Institute website yourself, and you'll see on there that there are, that I checked every state in the Union, and I checked the healthcare industry specifically, both inpatient and outpatient facilities. There are 12 net zero projects in the United States. There is only one project that is operated for a full year and verified that the building is actually producing more energy than it, than it is consuming, and it's the East Side Clinic. So we're the, we're the first in the country, and I love to be able to say that out loud and in public. And I, I, I'm, I'm very proud that Pueblo is dovetailing with a community-wide goal that we have. And we, we know the mill is moving that direction, the, the, the education sector is moving that direction, the private sector is moving in that direction. So very proud to be able to announce that. And you'll see on the, the chart there, our building is 64,000 square feet. It's the second-largest building of the 12 profiled on the website. So it's not as if we did an easy project relative to our, our competition. We had a, we had a large project, and we achieved the goal before anyone else could. Another thing that we're doing on the east side is, you know, the board made a pretty bold step to invest. The total project cost was, was $32 million. And we actually evaluated lots of different locations to, to expand our services. And the board decided on reinvesting on the east side. And as a part of that, we drew the interest of the Urban Renewal Authority. And long story short, a new district was designated, and, is there a pointer on here? The, this is the East Side Clinic, right here at the epicenter of the Urban Renewal District. You have Rizley here and, and Mitchell Park up there north. And we're working with Jerry Pacheco and his team to see how we can repurpose the, the building that we vacated. The building that we vacated is at La Crosse and Forest Street. Right here, it's two lots down from the Fire Department building on Forest Street. So we want to see the east side revitalized. We made the largest single investment on the east side since probably the Rizley Middle School project was done in the early 90s. So we're proud of that leadership, but we're also really glad to be working with Urban Renewal to see what we can do to make sure the building we vacated doesn't result in further blight and, and idle asset. We want to see something beneficial to the community, some, something beneficial to the economy developed at that site. All right, finally, and this is what really matters, what, you know, what kind of difference are we making with the project? What I'm showing here is 2019, which is the last full year of operation at our Park Hill Clinic before the pandemic versus 2022, which is the first year of operation of the East Side Clinic. And you can see across the board, we've expanded access in terms of the clients served. The number of new patients who heretofore didn't have access is greater than 2019. We've established dental care, as I mentioned, and a significant increase in access to mental health care as well. And then finally, I'll just, I'll just, I pulled some data based upon January through August of this year. And we have already served 6,547 individuals through eight months of the year compared to 7,404 for all of last year. So we are definitely on pace this year to exceed the number of people that we reach from an access point, and that's all lines of service, medical, dental, behavioral health. So I sit before you, proud to say that I, I think the Health Center's been accountable for the public funds it's received from the city, from the county, from foundations, the community at large. And the need for healthcare just continues to grow in our community. And PCHC is, is glad to be part of all of the providers in this community that work together to make sure that healthcare isn't an area that is a detriment to the quality of life in Pueblo, but is an asset to the quality of life in Pueblo. So without, I'll, I'll conclude and be glad to discuss any topics of interest to you that I might not have covered. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Moore. And what a great presentation. Congratulations to the Community Health Center for great progress in metrics. Questions from council? Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Don, for that report, and thank you for serving so many people. The, the question that I have is the area of mental health. And it sounds like, out of the patient count, it probably only represents maybe 3%. So what kind of mental health services do you provide? It sounds like it's very, a very small portion of what you do.
Yeah, just by way of comparison, when I took over as CEO, CEO in 2009, we probably had three or four clinical social workers on staff. We have 18 now. And we, we certainly have the traditional mental health where you can go for a therapy visit for 45 minutes. But most of our clinicians are based in the primary, in the medical clinic themselves. So if someone comes in, say, for a diabetic check today, and during that visit, it's, it's learned that maybe their depression has reoccurred or, or they're experiencing it for the first time. A separate appointment doesn't need to be made. The, the therapist can address their need during that visit. So the numbers, the three, the numbers that you pointed out represent people who are having those traditional visits and may not represent the entire activity associated with access to behavioral and mental health care. I'll add also that we have a psychiatrist part-time and a psychiatric nurse practitioner who are able to prescribe and manage psychiatric medicines for patients in need. Most primary care providers are pretty comfortable managing all kinds of mental health meds. But sometimes when, when, if the acuity or the severity is more, you need a, a specialist to do that. And so we have those folks on staff as well.
When you receive funding through the federal government, do they differentiate between mental health and medical health?
No, our, our federal grant is about $5 million of, of that $38 million. And by the way, it's, it's up for reappropriation in Congress. Things are totally dysfunctional there right now. So I don't know when they'll get around to making their decisions. But this fall, we'll, we'll be lobbying to grow that funding because the need does continue to grow. With the pandemic coming to an end, people are losing their Medicaid coverage and they're becoming uninsured. So that's a challenge I think we'll be facing in the coming months. But to answer your question, councilman, that $5 million is what enables us to fulfill that role of not turning anybody away due to inability to pay. Almost 15% of our patients have no coverage whatsoever. And so the grant helps pay the difference between the cost of the care and what patients pay on the sliding fee scale. Five, $10 co-payments. It also funds services that we can't bill for, like case management, care coordination, navigation services, health education, what we call enabling services that help patients adhere to their treatment plans and access the services in the community that support their well, their wellbeing.
I, I don't really have another question, but I think in today's environment, it is so important that we start communicating to the public what is true and what isn't true. All of a sudden, I guess, we, we're seeing more COVID cases and the whole discussion about how you deal with that with, either with inoculations or with the use of masks has now become a political
Yes.
issue again. And you have television or radio personalities that are now, you know, giving people advice on what they should do and shouldn't do. And I, I just think it's so important, especially somebody in your position, that we have really valid information that people can use because it's so confusing out there right now
Yeah.
about whether you should do this or that. And it just seems like there's a lot of, I don't know, vilification of, of mistakes that were made, you know, with a virus that was unknown. And it's, it's kind of sad to see because I think people get confused. But I think the, the Health Center that could really help in providing valid information, the right information.
Yeah, I think the local health department does a great job of putting objective, clear information out there. So I think that's a great source. Our flu vaccine, our COVID vaccine, which isn't quite yet available, we're waiting on the shipment. We're going to be getting that in. We, our, our effort is always to reach as many patients as possible and offer them the vaccine because it is, it is a cost-effective way to avoid disease and death. Yep.
Counselor Atencio?
Yeah, Donald, when first we met before you started construction, I remember you telling me you were, you wanted to do that. And I didn't hesitate. I wanted a grocery store on that location, of course, but I knew it wasn't going to happen. We weren't going to bring. But what you did is going to make a really big difference in the, literally the quality of life for people on that side of town. Not only that side of town, there's people from all over town that go there. But especially for that side of town, there's, because it's easy access, it's right in the neighborhood where they live. And it's going to make a big, big difference in terms of their healthcare. Plain, plain and simple. Access is, is the big thing. And thanks to you and your board and everybody at Community Health. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll pass that along to the board. And Larry, thank you. You, you came to our community input meetings early on and have been a great supporter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Moore, I know, so when I took the tour, there was a couple areas of the new East Side building that was vacant, and I know that you had, had a vision, and the board has a vision for growth. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. When we moved from the Park Hill Clinic into the East Side Clinic, we were able to move pretty much everything we were doing in Park Hill into the first floor and a little bit of the second floor. And the rest of the building is available for expansion. We've started to grow into the second floor and have hired more staff and opened up more exam rooms because of the increasing activity that I referenced earlier. But our, the third floor is completely shelled out. All the facilities are built into the building. But the Health Center's positioned to add more capacity as the need and the demand presents itself. And so we, we feel like that, that was a good proactive thing to do to build as much space as possible at today's cost so that in the future, we can renovate that space and expand as needed for the community.
Yeah, that's great, especially on the east side where it's all kind of built already. And I know that you, I mean, you've already invested so much in the east side in terms of financial and just energy. Can the city help at all with the, with PURA, your work with PURA or your efforts there?
Yeah, our board passed a resolution last fall where they would like to, they've directed me and my team to find partnerships to develop affordable housing. It, it's, I mean, everybody knows that's a great need in the community. And we are totally stoked about the ability to collaborate with the Urban Renewal District. We've been having positive meetings with Jerry Pacheco, the mayor, and Councilwoman Graham have gotten involved. And so I feel really good about the direction of those conversations. I, I don't have a specific request now. Jerry and the mayor and I are tossing around some ideas and hope to bring some proposals forward.
Great. Well, that's very exciting for us to hear. So if we can help at all with that, let us know.
Thank you.
And then do you want to talk a little bit about Convoy of Hope coming up?
You know, Laura mentioned that to me. I, I just got back from vacation the end of last week, and I, I have to admit, I'm not familiar with that initiative. I apologize.
It's okay. It sounds great. I was going to give you a plug, Donald.
Okay.
And it, and that's where we're going to leave it. And I'm, and I'm sure that it sounds great. That's all I know is Convoy of Hope. And then I saw PCHC, so I was like, okay, great. I'll ask Donald about it.
I'm sure we, I mean, if it's a community-wide effort, I'm sure we're involved. We tend to get involved in as much as we can. I apologize, I can't address it more specifically.
Mayor, did you have anything?
Remind me what the total cost was for the construction of the East Side Healthcare Center?
24 million.
24 million?
Yeah, but the, the total project cost, you know, acquisition of land, development, financing was 32.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Moore, and congratulations again.
Thank you. You're welcome, and thanks for your interest in having me come.
Yeah. Keep sending us updates on our council packets.
Okay.
All right, moving right along on our agenda, the next topic is leading civic engagement. We have several city employees who are going to talk to us about that. So up to the podium is Ms. Robinson. I see Captain Taylor and Ms. Moore and Ms. Romero. You guys all color coordinate as well, so that's exciting.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, and Mayor Gratazar. I'm going to do a little bit of the background.
Um, I'm going to do a little bit of the background very quick and then turn it over to the team. Um, as a, as a refresher reminder, in two thousand nineteen, um Harvard Bloomberg um offered the opportunity for the mayor, police chief Davenport and myself to attend um a municipal leadership um program, uh, which we did and we graduated from. And it opened the door to many other opportunities for the city. A data-driven decision-making, um, a cyber, which was um cities budgeting for equity and recovery during COVID. It brought to us our Harvard Fellow. It brought to us an opportunity for eleven members to attend innovation training. And this past summer in June, um, at one out of eleven cities where we were selected from worldwide to participate in leading civic engagement. It was a, a week-long uh discussion and learning about the art and the science of leading civic engagement. The mayor selected this cross-departmental leadership team that are going to take it from here with some uh background, a proposal, a project. Um, Tamara leads the recreation supervisor out of the parks. So when you talk about leading civic engagement, you can see such an opportunity for parks. Um, you can talk, you can see a lot about participatory budgeting, uh, the police department with Captain Taylor. And of course, our director of public affairs is right in the middle of civic engagement. So I'm going to turn it over to our team and away we go. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. So um, as Laura just spoke about our, our time at Harvard Bloomberg. So we spent five days there with eleven other cities from across the nation and then also uh a couple of um international cities as well. And so while we were there, we learned some of the good and bad things of civic engagement, things that have done, been done well and some missteps. And while they were, while we were there, they gave us um the opportunity to work on a project to hopefully bring back to you all as a proposal. Um, we've had a couple of conversations with the mayor. And while we were there, we were able to take from some of our partners um in the United Kingdom, in Atlanta, in uh Lincoln, Nebraska, um, and other cities, some of their good ideas. And one of them that came across was um participatory budgeting. And so that's one thing that we'd like to propose to you today. And we had um some folks from Lancaster, Pennsylvania, who have seen really good um results with this. Also Riga, Latvia. And as a part of this project, we've seen, they've seen some of their residents come forward with wonderful ideas that as city government, I think we probably would never think of them ourselves. And so um, we essentially piggybacked on their great idea and we're here to present it to you today um as part of your idea, your neighborhood. Um, a couple of those ideas, public art improvement projects, a festival, um, also neighborhood cleanups, things that we think of, but maybe we as city government don't necessarily do um on a regular basis or isn't part of our regular, everyday um city work. So now we're here to tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Haley. So as far as the uh program, what we did is we came up with this idea, as Haley alluded to, is your idea, your neighborhood. Um, and so I'd like to discuss kind of what our mission is with this program. Um, it's meant to create an ownership and genuine participation in city government by our neighborhoods and residents through the allocation of city resources determined by community participants to inspire the improvement of quality of life in the city of Pueblo. And so some of our goals for this project are to invest a million dollars within our community. Uh, we want to engage our residents across all neighborhoods within the community. We want to give the citizens equitable access to our resources as well as to use this as a pilot program for future participatory budgeting in the community. So these projects are all citizen-driven that we're hoping to um have brought forward. Um, we want them to be voted on by committee of peers from each district. We're envision a uh two uh person team from each district that would uh be, uh, create an eight-person team and one at large that would uh review these uh projects that are brought forward through the citizens of Pueblo and then vote on those and bring those forward. The one thing that we want to make clear is that this is a million dollars isn't going to go directly to the citizens of Pueblo. What it'll do is they'll bring us these projects. They'll vote on these and decide which ones are the best ones that are going to have the biggest impact, positive impact on the community of Pueblo. And that money will be uh delivered to the city um organizations that'll be completing those projects. Uh, so if it's something that deals with parks or if it's something with wastewater, those things will be kept in-house. The money will not go directly to the uh citizens. Obviously, we'll make sure that all the uh normal city processes are followed with that money and those projects when they do come to fruition. Um, I was able to do a, a study on Durham, North Carolina that has a very similar project uh as what we're looking at here. And they've been doing that since about two thousand nineteen. It has some great success within their community with uh building uh different community centers as well as uh doing things like investing in wifi in public parks and things like. So there's a lot of good benefits that have come out of some of these programs, um, not just uh all across the world, but just here locally within the United States. And some of the ways we want to uh look at measuring our success of this program is we want to see the number of participants that uh get engaged with this. We want to look at the number of neighborhoods and citizens positively impacted. Uh, we want to look at demographics, like neighborhoods that are served, the youth. We want to get the youth involved in this as well as try to do outreach to the parts of the community that are not normally served by some of this. Uh, we also want to look at the number of projects submitted as well as the number of projects that are completed. And then we want to, want to see as part of our success is that we fully, fully utilize the money that's allocated for this on projects, be it a one-time project or a sustainable project that can continue on for years and years and benefit Pueblo. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex, who will talk a little bit about the uh, the funding.
We're going to talk about the timeline of events. So first I want to highlight that this would be added to our capital improvement budget as a million dollars. And as Captain Taylor was discussing, this money wouldn't go out to the actual citizens. It would be, the projects would be chosen. And then if it was a parks project, it would then be resolution over to parks. So I just wanted to make that part clear. And then also, as we go through this process, we also would make clear that until the two thousand twenty-four budget was budgeted and appropriated and accepted by council, that this project isn't a for-sure thing, that we still have to make sense that it would be budgeted for, for next year. So we do have some of these events prior to when we'll have the first and final reading for the budget. But at every single one of those, we will make that clear that this is solely based on the passing of that budget and this being included in that budget. So we will be having town halls and this is to try and get engagement from the different neighborhoods. And so we have different places, different times and locations and dates to try and be accessible to most individuals. We do have one that's online and so that one's on a Wednesday evening. We have one that's going to be youth-focused on Friday, October sixth, at El Centro de Quinto Soul. And again, we have that on Friday, so it is when the students won't be in school. We have one at YMCA, so we're trying to get to all those different neighborhoods because that's what we really want this to be, is to be within those different areas. And then once we get through that process, we will be having that committee that's going to be reviewing the applications. And so those will be two individuals from each district. And that's one thing that we wanted to mention while we present to council is that if you have individuals within your district or individuals within the community that you think would be beneficial to be on this selection group, to encourage them to apply to be on this committee. So those applications will be open for the entire month of November. And we'll have the two from each district and then the one at large. So we do have an odd number for voting purposes. They must be available for the first two weeks of March and the month of February to do the review application. And then, as I said, the budget is going to be read in November. So we will know at the end of November if this is going to be a for-sure thing. And then we'll send out the applications for all citizens for the month of December and January. Because part of this is that if you have an idea to do a park bench, you might not know how much that is or how much concrete is. So we are going to be asking individuals to connect with the city and we'll have one specific point of contact that those questions will come into. And then we will reach out and connect them to who they need to speak to, to get that answer. And so that's why we wanted to have two months. We understand that people probably still will wait until the end of January, but we wanted to have that availability so that they could fill out the application and get as much information and build that narrative for that project. And then applications will close January thirty-first with the review process of that six weeks going to March fifteenth. We'll have notification going out at the end of March with projects being completed in the spring and summertime. And we do want to reach out to those that aren't um chosen for a project so that we could help them identify why, if it was something that they need to improve on for maybe next year or something like that, so that they don't feel like they just put their application in, put a lot of work into it and then never heard back. And so with that, I will pass it over to Tamara.
Okay, um, I'm just going to highlight a few things before we wrap up. Um, this pilot program that we're proposing, your idea, your neighborhood, um, places citizens as a decision-makers throughout the entire process from submitting their projects to forming that committee to review and select the projects. Um, during the project submission time period, we are designating point people, as Alex said, within each department to be that point of contact to help answer questions. So um, it could be anywhere from the feasibility of the project, the cost, um, as long as maybe identifying missing pieces of a project. So they want to put trees, for example, in their park. You know, have they considered what type of tree, how large they are, how many they're going to need? Is there irrigation in place? Or is it something that we need to figure out installing as part of the project? Um, we are just hoping to be able to engage in a positive and helpful manner um to encourage the project submissions that are realistic and also well thought, thought through. After the projects are submitted, they will be scored based on the listed categories on your screen. Um, eligibility, complexity, community benefiting, equity, due diligence with city departments, that's a point-of-person contact, cost and evidence of sustainability. Um, the scoring will be done by the review committee made up of citizens, as we discussed, two from each district and then one at large, again, making them the, the decision-makers in the process. Um, I think that's about it. We would love your help. Um, you guys know your districts and your constituents. So if you can encourage them to submit projects and apply, if they would be good for that review committee, we would really appreciate it.
Questions?
Yeah, great. Thank you so much for um sharing that idea. I know that we all probably have several questions, so um, thanks for that report out, city staff. Councilor Martinez Ortega, I'll start.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you all for putting together that uh presentation. It was very well thought out. Um, how do folks um get a hold of the application for, to be a part of the nine um decision-makers?
Okay, uh, so we're in the process right now of developing the application uh both for the projects and then also for the review committee, but it will all be held on the website. Um, and so what we're hoping, based on your feedback this evening, is that once we host these town halls, then we'll be able to point citizens and folks in the right direction of where they can apply for that, if they're interested in the review committee, and then let them know the go-live date, um, both of November one for review and then for the project submission on December one.
Please keep us apprised um as some of these ti- uh, some of these dates come forward to also um remind us just to announce them for the regular meetings and things like that as we get closer to them.
Other questions? I, do you, oh, yeah, I have several. Who's going to facilitate this process? Go ahead.
The team of five that you see here, we're the ones that are going to be holding that email address and being the ones that are going to put the citizens in charge of who they'd need to talk to in the different departments. But as far as the person that's going to be working with the review committee to make it kind of impartial, that is going to be Yadi, and so she's in the audience here today. She's our diversity and inclusion coordinator with Bloomberg Harvard. She's our fellow. And so that's going to be, so she'll be able to put all those meetings together. But then she is, she's a little separate from the process. But we're going to be the five that are kind of facilitating the process throughout until we get
And then Yari is going to pick it up.
Yes, so she'll be doing the part that's in February through March with the review committee.
For um the funding, when people apply for their projects, do they all have to be centered around capital improvement? Given that it's in the capital improvement line item in the budget?
No, so that's just the project it's going to be living in, is your ideas, your neighborhood, a hundred, the million dollars. But if they have different ideas that are not capital improvement, for instance, we said um like a concert. So one of the ideas at Ariga, Latvia, they had concerts that were in different neighborhoods because they were always focused downtown at like Memorial Hall. And so they brought these to the different neighborhoods. So it doesn't have to be a capital item in nature.
So it could be like programming, general operating, capital improvement, infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay. Do they have to spend the money by a certain date?
So since it's going to be a project, it would be able to be rolled forward. We are going to be working with each of them that are chosen to see a timeline of when it could be completed. But it doesn't have to be completed within the two thousand twenty-four calendar year.
Um, is this only for five oh one C threes or can LLCs and just people?
Everybody.
Wow.
So, so to clarify that point, it's actually not specific to um five oh one C threes or LLCs. Um, because all of the funding will stay internally with the city. But we really want folks, regardless of whether it is a five oh one C three, um, you know, a Girl Scout troop, a neighborhood homeowners association, or just a group of individuals who have a really fun idea that they've thought about, anyone can apply. Um, however, it's not awarding the funds to that specific person or organization. It's to the project they've brought forward that then will be allocated internally to a city department to do.
And then who's going to actually be implementing the project, given that it's going to be housed in various city departments? For example, what if a community group applies and it's for Public Works at twenty-five thousand? Public Works is like, we don't have the time or capacity for this. Is that, what happens then?
And that's part of when they do the application process and they speak to that department, that would be part of the narrative. And we would make sure that they have done that process because we don't want to have these projects come in and then, yes, have half a million going towards Public Works and them not being able to do those projects. So that's why we want to make sure that they're working with the departments throughout this process.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, for an example, is Eric Saracino, who is the artist with respect to the professional services for the mural. Um, public uh Parks is going to um contract for professional services. So he's got the subject matter expertise. It is the city Parks Department that will facilitate the expenditures and reimbursements for him. So similar, that could happen with a basketball court. We'd have to follow the regular procurement procedures um and contract out.
Okay. Counselor Mashi?
So participatory, participatory democracy is its own form of government. Tell me how we include this and how we come together when we operate under a republic constitutional form of government. I mean, we are elected officials. We are the elected officials that represent this community. And you're forming a committee that's making financial decisions when we are the ruling factor up here on the dais as far as how that's going. I mean, I would like to see, I'd like to throw my own town halls and see what my constituents wants. Why are we moving it down to a second type of um a, a different committee instead of putting it in the hands of council to do this with our own um constituencies in our own districts? What, what comes up with that? Because I, I'm curious, you know, the Harvard, um, the Bloomberg Institute at Harvard is a global um teaches global municipality. We operate in this country as a republic form of government. So obviously, they're going to not always match up with each other from different other countries. And are we going against, I mean, we, we swore, when we were sworn in was to uphold the Constitution of the United States and our republic form of government. So when you bring in a participatory democracy, um, that's another government in itself. So how, could you explain to us how this is going to work without uh overlapping with the other or conflicting?
So it would be council that would be budgeting and appropriating these funds for the million dollars for your ideas, your neighborhood. And it's all projects that would be funded throughout the city. And so we want it to be citizen-led and the fact that they will be the ones bringing the projects forward. And then it's their other citizens that are voting on those. And so of course, there's going to be, if, if we're looking at these and it's something And so of course there's going to be, if, if we're looking at these and it's something that's outrageous and it's something that wouldn't be feasible. That'll be determined within the matrix of the voting. And so it's not going to be anything that's going to be going outside of what we would be able to do legally. So how we talked about, we will make sure that the procurement processes are fulfilled, all those different pieces.
But you're choosing, you're choosing citizens, you're appointing them. This is a, um, you know, we were elected. So the citizens as a whole has elected us to make those decisions. Where are, what, where do you come in being able to appoint people to start? You know, being involved in these decisions and then bringing them to us.
And that's part of what participatory budgeting is, is having it be citizen led. And so we just take a small portion of the budget. Which the, the concept of what this is will be approved through council. And then we are allowing the committee just to look at those dollars specifically.
Well, you know, it's like, and this was prior to, um, us coming on, some of us coming on to council when you picked the seven pillars. To, um, distribute and review all the ARPA funds and really here on council, we didn't know everyone who, um. Applied. We didn't know what basis, um, they were being, um, accepted on. We had members pillars come up here and get funds for some of their own organizations. So it leaves council. A little bit out of the loop when we start to do things like this, but yet we're the ones. Who are responsible for making sure that the funds are properly allocated. And so, I mean, I don't know about the rest of council, but I don't feel like we should, um, be having. Uh, committees choose what's right for our districts. I think that maybe if necessary, we need to just get a little bit more involved in our districts. And make those decisions for them ourselves because we are elected to do so. We are not appointed, we're elected to do so. So that's just my opinion.
Counsel Graham.
Alex, would this be very, uh, similar to CSAC funding?
Correct.
Um, so we do the exact same thing. Out of the general fund, we budget half a million dollars. Citizens on an advisory board decide where the funding goes and the council approves it. So this would be the exact same thing.
That is correct.
Great.
Um, well, in, in, and. When it comes to CSAC funding, that was put into people's, that was put into a committee's hands because, so that no favoritism was involved. And then we turned around and not just did CSAC funding, but we did an additional 800,000 in last year's budget. Because this council felt like there was favoritism involved. I mean, these are their own, you know, this is the council's own decisions and maybe sometimes we just need to, uh, take more responsible roles. And make sure that those, those processes aren't taking place.
I think, and just really quickly, I want to, for the record, not only do we have CSAC, but CBDG also has a committee that's very similarly structured where. Citizens are appointed and then given a pot of money that they dole out. Um, so it's not, it's not just CSAC, Counsel Mashi.
We did have those, we did have some of those CBDG meetings or, I'm sorry, I, I'm not remembering the acronym. But more stakeholders show up than citizens and that's very concerning. When stakeholders are showing up and the citizens aren't showing up and the decisions are being made, that's very concerning. As to who's really benefiting from it.
Ms. Robinson.
We have a couple, um, of stopgaps in place for that and, and that's part of the reason why we asked you as council. Because we do believe that you know your district's the best and the needs in your district or the citizens who are involved specifically within your districts and across the community. So A, that the, um, review committee would be, um, made up of folks who are not actually putting forth a proposal. Or project and that will be within the application process so that. If I live in a specific district and I'm looking to have a project put forward that I can't be a person that's then approving it. Um, but that's also why we really want to make sure that there's two folks from every district who are represented. And then an at-large person, so we can have a tiebreaker of nine folks total. But that's also why we'd like to encourage you as counselors to find those folks, because you do know your stakeholders and your constituents. Who could be part of the review committee, but maybe you have an idea or you've been told an idea as a counselor. Of what is really needed in your district. And so then you can go back to those folks and say, hey, here's, here's a project. That you can put, um, forward and we have funding available specifically for that. Cause I know many times we. Have to say that's just not feasible. So here's an opportunity that we can hopefully ask people to think creatively. And how we can say yes to some projects that are really fun and cool for the community.
Mayor, did you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to add that there's nothing about this proposal that involves the citizens. There's nothing that prevents any council person from having their own community meetings in their district. And soliciting ideas from those citizens to put. To bring forward to the council as a whole or as a part of this process, uh, about a project that they'd like to see in that district. So there's nothing. That prohibits a council member from organizing and conducting those meetings on their own.
Counsel Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. Um, and to the mayor's point, we're. Having a town hall specifically for South Point, um, this weekend and, um, I guess. I think this is a great idea and I am definitely for more community engagement, especially into how we spend our money. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Uh, Scott Hobson in the planning department, um, I think attended coordinated, um, with, um, citizens in the smelter area. And you likely attended those meetings. He, he, when we presented to, to, uh, department directors, uh, for their concurrence or their support for it. Or their questions and concerns, uh, mentioned that the outcome of those community meetings is a list of about seven, eight projects. And without any opportunity to bring forward, uh, for funding. He feels like in that area, there's already projects that are put together that would be waiting for volunteers to submit. Uh, project ideas, uh, for that particular area. So some of that community work, I think is, is, is happening, um, already. And this just provides an avenue that isn't federal funded. It is city money. It is taxpayers' money. It is under the control of, of the council. Uh, to facilitate your idea, your neighborhood.
Why aren't they just bringing it to, directly to council then? I mean, they, if, if they're already organizing and they have ideas, why haven't they just brought it forward to council?
Um, I, you know, I think.
Because the mayor says that we could at any time, but you guys, you're establishing a budget here of a million dollars. You've never said to us, oh. You know, take a million dollars and decide what you can do within your district. Those are just, that's the way I'm seeing it.
Counsel Graham.
I was just going to ask, is the money going to be equally divided into the four districts or what is that going to look like?
No, but just because of the impact. So yes, we don't want to have one neighborhood get all the money. And other projects not be, um, allowed or passed through. But we want to make sure that we aren't limiting it. So if that one community has a wonderful idea, but it's a little more pricier than other ideas. So we might see an area that you do see more dollars spent. But it's not because we're trying to be inequitable. It's looking at what projects make the biggest impact in those areas. And also who applies? You know, if we don't have a lot applied from one area, well, then next year we can really try. And go into that neighborhood and have them put forward ideas. So that's why we want to have, uh, the four districts represented. So that hopefully we do have a spread, but we were, we were, um, very cognizant of not putting a dollar cap. Per project so that it didn't limit anybody's ideas.
And also there, there may be an idea such as like a park bench. Maybe somebody just wants a park bench in their neighborhood. And that's a fairly small cost in comparison to, um, what Tamara mentioned earlier with. Trees and potential irrigation in another neighborhood. They both could potentially have the same type of impact on a neighborhood, but the cost is different. And so. It just seems cost prohibitive to tell one neighborhood, you have this pot and it has to be equal across when we could do multiple projects. Um, across the city. I, but that's also why we have the folks from the review committee so they can vouch for their districts and say, we really need this.
Counsel Kentsia?
Yeah, I'm, don't want to defend Ms. Mistry, but she has a point. Uh, CSAC and, um, CDBG, those committees, if you think they're, they don't have their favorites. And who, who they think should get the most money, you're fooling yourselves because they do. And you can, uh, let me give you one specific, uh, example. La Henta youth sports gets shafted every single time by everybody. Why? I don't know. I have my own ideas as to why, but they get shafted and then, but, uh, and I love Boys and Girls Club. But they get hundreds of thousands from every single person in town, uh, every organization in the city and everybody else. And La Henta serves as many kids as they do. Why? You know, is that equitable? No. And it's because the CDBG committees and the CSAC, they, they have their favorites. She has a point. Is it going to be the same thing here? Let's hope not.
Well, you know, I mean, we should, we're the elected officials. We should take responsibility. If there's favoritism being made. Then we need to take responsibility for that in our vote and how we vote for these things.
Well, those committees should become equitable on their own. We shouldn't have to hit them over the head to.
No, but we can, we can take the, we can be asked directly and make those decisions directly.
Well, just.
You have a point, I understand.
Just as clarification, um, but to, I guess my question earlier, nonprofits aren't going to be the ones getting these funds. It's going to be, um, distributed through the appropriate city departments, whether that be public works, Parks and Rec, PD. Whatever that may look like, it's going to be the city departments who are getting it, not nonprofits or external partners. Any other questions, Counsel Forrest?
I don't think this is complicated as everybody's making this. Nothing happens in the city of Pueblo without. Ratification of this council of all board members that we apply. Nothing happens. Uh, in any committee that we have, any board that we have, whether it's planning and zoning, zoning board of appeals. Without this council ratifying those members. And in addition, if money is spent, there isn't a penny that is expended by this city. Without the seven of us ratifying it. So I don't, I don't see why, I, I just don't see this cloudy thing that's happening here. We ultimately have the decision to be able to say yay or nay to your project. Uh, and so it's not complicated. It's very simple.
Well, I disagree. I mean, I think that we get second, third, fourth, fifth and sixth hand information. And I just would like to work directly with the groups and get firsthand information.
So then hold some town halls or something like that and go get the information.
I want to remind everyone, if you're going to be speaking, please, can I just a, acknowledge you before you speak? Because I don't want this to turn into a free for all. Thank you. Counsel Mistry, did you have any other thoughts before we move on?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm really looking forward to this project. I think it's going to be great. I appreciate city staff's time, not only for representing, uh, Pueblo. At a national level and a global level, but for, um, bringing this idea back. I think the more community participation, the better. And I look forward to. Um, District Three representing itself. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on our agenda, the last, um, thing kind of ish is a real time crime center. So can I please have, I see Ms. Lori, are you going to join us, Ms. Lori? And Chief Knoller? And we may have friends on Zoom. I just don't know who they are.
Madam, Madam Chair, let me begin, uh, just with a few remarks and I'll turn it over to Chief Knoller and the team that can go through, uh. The presentation that, uh, you all have received a copy of. But for the last eight or nine months, at least maybe longer, the chief and I have been talking about this real time crime center. Um, and we've visited, uh, real time crime centers in Chihuahua, Mexico, Albuquerque, New Mexico. And basically we've decided to try to move forward with that here. It's, um, an effort to try to utilize technology to. Buttrus our police force and to stretch our police force, make them more efficient and more effective in. If not preventing crime, in solving crimes that are committed. A lot of that will be using, um, computers and using civilians, um, to investigate. Some of these crimes as soon as the call comes into dispatch. If cameras are available in that area, if the shot spotter or the sound thinking is available in that area. Or the license plate readers are available in that area, these civilians will be able to begin the investigation of the call that came in. Before the police officer ever arrives on the scene. So this will be a public safety issue for the police officers. Because they'll have more information when they get there. So, uh, the chief will outline for you what we've got in mind. Our intent is to. Stand up this program, uh, with ARPA dollars and, uh, uh. We have, we believe sufficient ARPA money to stand this program up, but, uh, I'll turn it over to the chief for the presentation. Chief.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Madam Chair, members of council, thank you for having us here tonight. We do have, uh. And I don't know, I'm going to butcher his last name, but I apologize, Phil Malensk. And, uh, from Genetek and Terry Green from ShotSpotter who were joining us by Zoom if there's any questions that they can answer. Um, so what I'll do right now is, is just kind of go through what a real time crime center is. Um, real time crime center is, is set up to establish, uh, uh, the ability to provide real time information to our police officers as they're responding. To a scene, uh, using technology and, and, uh, computer systems to provide that, that feed. I have to admit, when I first heard of this, uh, uh, I wasn't really sold on it. This is about four years ago. I had the opportunity, as several of, of you have had over the last few years, to go to, uh, our sister city, Chihuahua, uh, Mexico. And see their, what they call their shield system, which is a, uh, ideally what, what we eventually want to get to with the real time crime center. And the ability, uh, for them to, uh, uh, take a call for service. Uh, use their, uh, real time crime software to identify where that is. Zoom in on what cameras are available, what other systems are available. In order to provide that real time update to the police officers on the street is just absolutely incredible, uh, with the way their system works. And that's what really got me sold on, on working towards a real time crime center. Um, what the RTCC does is makes it possible to use these technologies to coordinate sworn and non-s sworn personnel. And, and direct their attention to both high crime areas and active crimes in progress. Uh, large scale public events, uh, that may require law enforcement, uh, presence or a response and, uh, high profile or, or highly recidivistic. Uh, offenders in the community, we can use different tools to try to, to, uh, uh, control their behavior and, and, and make arrests. In short, the RTCC would maximize the likelihood that law enforcement can respond to crimes occurring in real time and do so effectively. There is a link there. That's from the, uh, Department of Justice, uh, um, I can't remember the, uh. Mission of a real time crime center is from the, uh, uh, BJA Office of, uh, um. I can't remember what that is. It's, it's the Bureau of Justice Administration Office of Judicial, uh. Processes, I think. Um, the, uh, next slide. Shows what an RTCC.
The most valuable difference about the real time crime center than just a regular call for services, officers behind the screen. They know the information that they need to get to us right now.
Real time crime center is able to say, nope, he's right there or she's right there, or they're driving this way, or I last seen them going through this parking lot. And we're able to pick up that path there and start working from that moment.
And to be able to have that type of technology at your fingertips. We're just scratching the surface. So the, the program, uh, the way we've, we've modeled this first phase of the real time crime center. Is to, uh, work cooperatively with, uh, uh, sound thinking formerly known as ShotSpotter. And, uh, uh, Genetech, uh, to use their software, uh, and, um, advanced license plate readers. Us, in, in those systems working together. What, what ShotSpotter is, is a, is a system that detects gunshots. Um, a lot of times we get a lot of calls for service related to gunshots, uh, whether that's a, just a sound of gunshots or. Uh, drive-by shooting or an actual shooting event that it makes it difficult based on the calls to narrow down sometimes exactly where that is. ShotSpotter has a technology that can, uh, uses, uh, real people to listen to the sounds in, in, in real time. You know, it takes about thirty, thirty to sixty seconds for them to get us a response back. And it can triangulate the, the, uh, location of that shot down to eighty, eighty-two foot area. Which makes it a lot easier for our officers to locate where that's happened. We went, uh, the mayor and I went down to, and, 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 uh. Uh, Todd actually over there and, uh, um, one of our detectives and the captain went down to Albuquerque to see their real time crime center. Um, which is similar to the system that we're looking at. And they talked about an incident where a, a person had been shot. And they talked about an incident where a uh person had been shot. Nobody in the area called the police regarding the shooting. Because of the uh ShotSpotter technology, they were able to respond, luckily find this individual and render him aid in time to save his life and get him to the hospital before he passed away. So uh what happens is through this process, um they send out a uh yeah uh text message to the officers' phones. All of our officers have department-issued phones now. It will send out a uh text alert to the officer showing them where that is, uh which can help get them there quicker. And then, as I said, in the real-time crime center, our analysts would be able to see where that call for service, where that that ShotSpotter call came in from, and be able to start directing officers to information gathered through surveillance systems, the ALPRs, uh in in other other means that we can use technologically to to provide real-time information on where they're going, what they're doing. Uh, the ShotSpotter technology uses a a two-phase review, um artificial intelligence, uh software reviews and filters out uh noises that are not gunshots. And then there's an incident review center that does a a human verification of whether those are gunshots or not. So what the, what it looks like is this, the uh um little map there with the circle gives a precise location within about eighty-two feet of where that gunshot happens. It will date and timestamp it. It can identify if there's multiple shooters, uh if it's two different guns coming from different directions. And it can also tell whether it's automatic or high-capacity magazines that are being used. They store a short audio clip of the shots. And then this uh uh over to the left is what gets sent out to the uh the RTCC and to the officers on in the field, telling them where the uh gunshots are are taking place, how many of them, and that kind of thing. So some of the benefits are uh accurate location means a faster response by law enforcement, which, as I stated earlier in the example from Albuquerque, actually saved an individual's life. Um, we could allow us to pr- to provide lifesaving measures to those individuals, preserve evidence before it gets damaged further, being driven over on the street or 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 that kind of thing. Uh uh locate witnesses quicker. If we get to the scene quicker, we can like identify people that are still in the area that may have seen or heard something and uh help us locate and apprehend the suspects uh that were involved in the shooting. It also provides better information for our officers. As you can see on the slide, it identi- identify whether there's multiple shooters, the number of rounds that were fired, types of weapons, uh whether high-capacity or fully automatic weapons, um and provides critical information uh for safer response, which is where the RTCC comes in, being able to use those other technological means to to warn our officers of of what's happening uh via surveillance or ALPRs. The uh, some of the other communities that use uh uh Sound Thinking or ShotSpotter is the city of Bakersfield. Uh, they began in twenty eighteen. Uh, response time to shooting alerts have improved by more than nine minutes with their detection system. Um, led to the seizure of thirty-seven firearms and arrest of fifty different individuals. Um, they renewed their contract in twenty twenty and and it includes an expansion of that of that service. Um, city of Fresno reports a ninety-six percent accuracy rate, expanding their coverage in twenty twenty. And the city of San Pablo, uh also in California, reports a seventy percent decrease in incidence of gunfire and recently expanded to cover a hundred percent of their community. The city of East Palo Alto also recently renewed their contract. So the uh RTCC, as as I, as we're talking about, is is Phase One would include a three-square-mile area of coverage uh through um the uh um Sound Thinking or or ShotSpotter system. And what we've done is worked with our crime analyst and uh Sound Thinking to identify areas where most of our gunshot uh uh our shooting behavior is is taking place. So we're using a data-driven approach to to design and place these these items. That's also for the ALPR in in any surveillance system, uh camera systems that would be included. The data that we used was from January first of twenty twenty-one to uh April thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And during that time, we experienced forty-eight homicides, six hundred and seventy-two drive-by shootings, and thirty-five hundred shots fired calls. So the first area encompasses a two-mile square area that covers quite a big portion of the east side. That area right there in that same timeframe experienced twenty-seven percent of our homicides, uh nineteen percent of our shootings are drive-by shootings, and twenty-one percent of our shots fired calls. Um, the area that you see there outlined in red um would be the area that would be uh covered in that two-mile area. Um, just going back of a a block, those red blobs are, it's a heat map that shows where the the majority are more uh concentrated areas of these types of calls are occurring. The second location would be on the south side, and it would cover the area that you see there outlined in red. Um, that area um accounts for sixteen percent of our homicides, thirteen percent of our shootings are drive-by shootings, and about eleven percent of our shots fired calls. So the next thing that the uh RTCC can do is what's called federation of uh of other systems, uh video systems. So this is what makes it extremely attractive and and um more uh economical for the community, because what we can do is, through the use of the uh uh the way the system at Genetech has is is uh orchestrated, businesses can buy a device that would allow us access to their security system under parameters that they determine. They can allow us either to view it real-time, they can allow us to view it upon request, or they can allow us to uh um, but you would, that those would be the, really the two ways, uh uh either with their permission at any point or upon request, they could get us the information. And if that system is federated in there, then we would have the ability to download that that video as soon as the owner gave us permission to do so. The uh uh the other thing that we can do uh with this is is increase our area of coverage, again, at no cost to the city. Uh, cuz the businesses in this example would would purchase the device that would, that would help them federate their system. We also have the ability through the Genetech system to ask homeowners if they would like to, to sign up, to let us know what kind of systems that they have, so that we could bring their footage in at 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 our request. In other words, we would be able to identify where Ring cameras are, SimpliSafe, Vivint, there's a number of those systems. They could register their system with us. They would allow us to reach out to them. We can do it multiple ways. We can go to their house and talk to them and ask them for the video. We could send them an email if they sign up for the system. And they'll give them a link where they could upload that video into our system so that we could look at it um and and do it uh that way. So it's it's entirely voluntary. The homeowner or the business owner would have to agree to allow us to use that that information. So data retention is something that is usually a a a matter of of discussion. Uh, the current uh uh state minimum is a a thirty-day uh retention policy, I believe. Uh, we we would like to do is, what we would do is keep those those items for a forty-day retention, and then it would be wiped. The only exception is with ALPR data. There's state law that requires us to store for life any hit related to a advanced license plate reader. So if we got a hit on a vehicle, we would have to store that hit for for in perpetuity, um which is not a policy of ours. That's a state law that that was enacted several years ago in order to make sure that police departments are maintaining uh data appropriately and not misusing the systems. So the initial cost of the uh real-time crime centers is estimated to be uh slightly over two-point-two million dollars. The one-point-five million dollars roughly would cover the software from Genetech and twenty-two advanced license plate readers and a one-year paid subscription with the data plan. The uh ShotSpotter uh is two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars for the first year and two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars the following two years. Um, personnel, I I didn't go into a whole lot of detail about the manning of the real-time crime center. The plan is to man that with four-time, four real-time crime center analysts who would be civilian employees that are trained uh to utilize the the systems. They would have to go through the same background checks, polygraph exams, psychologicals that the police officers do, would be subject to the rules of of uh uh CCIC, NCIC, and also uh 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 CGS data information retention and use. Um, they would be supervised by one sergeant. Uh, the cost for the four uh real-time crime center analysts would be roughly three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars with benefits. Uh, that that's an estimate, but that's, it's a pretty close estimate. We worked with uh Marissa Pacheco in HR to try to get get those numbers whittled down. The other thing that we're looking at is, we are actually in the process of setting up a lease for two mobile surveillance solar cameras that we're gonna deploy during the Chili Fest uh coming up uh uh here later this month. The uh uh idea, hopefully, if we like the way they work and they work out the way we think they will, would be to try to purchase those for a total cost of a hundred-and-four thousand dollars. We, I would recommend that uh surveillance cameras would be placed in the ShotSpotter areas, um but that would be at an additional cost to this right now, and we don't have those numbers yet. I I do wanna note that the uh two-point-two million dollars is an estimate. The final design is still being worked out and and costs are are estimates. Again, the recurring cost would be the salary and benefits for the four employees. Um, the uh e- extension of the Sound Thinking gunshot detection system uh and Genetech licenses that would roughly cost about uh uh three-quarters of a million dollars each year. And that's assuming no expansion. And that is my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Do you have anything to add?
No, you did great.
I don't know about that, but.
Well, great. Thank you for that presentation, chief. Questions from council? Counselor Graham?
Chief, when will we see this go into effect if it's passed?
I think, um, well, Lori, you could probably answer that better than me, cuz it's her group that's gonna have to do that uh first quarter, second quarter of.
We're hoping. We're hoping we can start standing it up and have it stood up in some capacity by March. As long as he gets all of the funding.
President, President Graham also would add that we've submitted a grant that will cover the cost of those four analysts for a two-year period of time. Um, and the grant went in about, you think about a month ago, um anticipated, we will hear before year-end, uh which will, which would really help with that budget for personnel.
And thank you for reminding me. We also applied for a grant that might help pay for part of the ShotSpotter system as well.
And where's the additional funding coming from? Is that coming from PD's budget or ARPA funds or?
ARPA funds.
ARPA funds?
Yes, ma'am.
That additional one, what is it, one-point-five million dollars? We just have left for public safety. That's what that is. Great.
Counselor Martinez, we're taking.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as you had mentioned, the city of San Pablo, the seventy percent decrease in the gunfire activity, um, do you think that could be attributed to understanding what actual gunfire, like what was gunfire and what wasn't gunfire? So it may not have actually been less gunfire, just more identified, very specific gunfire as opposed to what people just may call in for?
You know, I I don't know the answer is is the truth. Um, I suppose that could be part of it. Um, part of it may be as well that it 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 uh, you know, allowed the officers to maybe make more arrests related to gun incidences. Um, and maybe because people know that that system is there, they're not, they're not as i- i- doing it as often, maybe. I, there's probably a lot of factors that could have gone into that. I don't know if Ms. Green is online. I don't know if she knows the peculiar's about that that city.
I I know it's the entire city and they were, hi, good afternoon. I'm sorry, good evening to not address you, uh Madam Chair and Council Mayor Grattasar. Chief, uh, I wanted to say that uh they use a lot of technology. They use drones as an example. So the drones they deploy once a ShotSpotter alert has gone off. Uh, and you know, if it's an active shooter situation, they've they've deployed other technologies. But I think you're right, chief. When the police know about gunfire and they're responding timely, it tends to bring down gun violence. Because again, the people who live in those areas committing the crimes are put on notice, that there's something now to detect it and locate it for the police.
That's an argument. Um, Ring, chief, um Ring already gives you info and sends out alerts that police want already, correct? Ring and some of those different um doorbell services?
They do, but the way I understand it is that the individual that owns the Ring system is the one that sends out that alert, not not just arbitrarily sent out by Ring. Like, if you had a Ring camera, you could send an alert out, this guy was in my yard, kind of a thing. Um, so I, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, but.
Um, I, from what I understand now, Ring, um if police are looking for a suspect relating to some crime or um something, that Ring um sends that out to all of those um Ring owners, those doorbell owners to help uh find some of these folks.
I I don't know. I don't know if that's true or not.
I've have heard of that from my um, from my district. And the two-hundred-and-seventy thousand or the seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand roughly uh moving forward for the next um, how long is, how long will we have that price tag uh moving forward for this system?
You know, it's hard, it's hard to say. I mean, that's, that's what the prices are today. Um, that's what the technology costs today. It may get cheaper, it may not. I don't know. Um, trying to forecast what it would cost, uh, you know, multiple years out is difficult. Um, you know, and then the other thing is, with that cost, is does the city or the council or the mayor find it advantageous to extend that program and build on it, which might change that cost down the road as well? So I don't, I don't know that I can fully answer that question. I think for the, obviously with salaries, there are step increases every year, so that would change a little bit. Um, benefits, uh you know, the prices could 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 fluctuate. Um, I think uh the the other prices for the next three to four years are probably fairly fairly close to what they would be. Uh, the uh Sound Thinking, uh, we haven't done a contract, but the the agreement that we had talked about was a three-year agreement. So it would be two more years out for that, for that pricing i- if it hasn't changed in the interim. Um, and then I think the uh data um software stuff for Genetech is fairly, is 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 anticipated to stay fairly consistent for the the next several years, next two or three years.
Um, just lastly, um, you know, it's um to increase the police's budget um more as a, as um it's already close to thirty-five percent of the budget already. I don't uh, I don't think I'll be supporting this, as it will put uh my district under a microscope. And as we know, if you put something under a microscope, you're gonna find something. I know Larry's excited about putting his district under a microscope, but I will not be supporting this.
But if I, if I, if I could respond, um, what I would tell you is, we are using a very data-driven approach to our deployment of not just this system, uh as we are looking at it currently, but to the way we deploy our officers. And we we respond to uh both crime and complaints from the people that call our 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 department. And and our goal, as always, is to uh treat people with respect and dignity and and enforce the law. Um, so I I understand your complaint, but but uh this is a very uh data-driven approach to where we are deploying this system and then where we deploy our officers.
But also, it's like listening in and uh accessing booty- video footage as well. So that is.
Voluntarily, yes, sir.
That is the mi- the microscope that I'm referring to.
If I may just expand upon that just a little bit, um, one of the things is through his data-driven approach and those heat maps, once the crime in those areas start to come down and the heat maps change, because they will be meeting frequently with ShotSpotter and going through um data-driven analysis on a pretty frequent basis, that equipment will, is movable. So once the crime in your areas start to come down or diminish, they can take that equipment and have it moved or have others stood up and remove that to help your citizens in that area not feel like that. Um, so I wanted to let you know that a lot of the equipment, like the LPRs and the ShotSpotter, are all movable based upon whatever that crime and those heat maps show within that, in within the areas of the community.
Thanks for letting us know that.
Counselor Atencio?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of a real-time crime center. Uh, if uh he doesn't want it in his district, then double the size on the east side, because I can guarantee you are, my constituents over there want uh police activity and they want the crime rate to go down. They want the shots to be, go down, and this is one way to do it. I saw this system in Chihuahua, Mexico, over five years ago, five years ago or so. And sometimes it takes a couple, two or three or four or five years to convince the higher-ups that it's a great, that their idea is really good. couple, two or three or four or five years to convince the higher-ups that it's a great, that their idea is really good to do things, but that's okay, as long as it gets done sometimes. Uh, but I didn't hear anything about a system of cameras like they do in Chihuahua.
Yeah, that's that's a part of the, uh, I don't know if I could go back on the slide. Sorry.
Oh, it's okay. My 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 point being that a friend of mine who was in, who is was retired now, uh, wasn't, uh, wasn't a police officer, but wasn't involved in in, um, criminal justice, uh, had a great idea. There's seven exits to the east side, one camera at each exit. Would, if there was something to happen at five thirty in the afternoon and at five thirty one, there was the car exiting one of the exits. We had his license plate number. We had the color of the car. We had the make of the car and we had a police officer chasing him in two minutes.
Well, there's two things to to address your your, uh, uh, statement is, uh, those twenty-two license, advanced license plate readers have the ability to capture images. Now, they're not video cameras. They're not, uh, surveillance cameras. But they do have the ability to, uh, capture images and the plan is to, uh, uh, deploy those ALPRs along with the shot spotter system. And then, as as you'll see there, uh, we recommend surveillance cameras in the shot spotter areas, but that would be an additional cost that we hadn't budgeted for yet. Uh, but that is, that is the plan and and, you know, I don't know. Uh, my vision is that this thing grows over time. Uh, I don't know that everybody else will share my vision on on council or 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 the mayor, but I think that that's that's where this is a very good starting point for for setting up a a real.
I agree, Chief, like, uh, a good starting point and, uh, later on, if we deploy a system of cameras, uh, real-time cameras uh, all over the city, not only just, uh, on the east side or wherever, but all over the city, it would help.
Right.
Uh, I I I think it would deter a lot of the crime because if people know they're being watched, they're they're going to change their behavior.
Counselor Mastry?
Um, Chief, I I I did a a deep dive on this and so I have a few questions because, you know, we are looking for solutions. Um, and the, I want the constituency to understand, um, some of the things that, you know, are out there when it comes to this. And so I took a study of nine cities. Um, and then I cross-referenced that study with other studies to, and they were pretty much all the similar cities. And I noticed that, um, the cities are about five, three to eighteen times larger than Pueblo that are that have real-time crime centers in place. And I, um, and they cost, you know, tens of millions of dollars to really get these systems up and going. And so, um, my, one of my concerns was, would we be able to sustain that? Would we be able to really co- completely invest in something of this magnitude to to for it to work?
Well, I ultimately, that would be council's decision, but what I can tell you is that while a lot of the departments that have a real-time crime center are very large departments, there are a number of departments that are our size or smaller that have similar technologies. Uh, I believe Grand Junction is standing up a real-time crime center. Uh, it's my understanding that Fort Collins is looking at standing up a real-time crime center. Um, and those are communities that are roughly our size in our state. Now, I have not done a survey because I did, I honestly didn't anticipate that question of how many other departments are size that have them. But the thing about a real-time crime center is that they are modular. They they grow as the city can grow them. They shrink as the city needs to shrink them. Um, they are, they are, uh, the ability to use the technology uh, in order to make our job, uh, my officer's job, because they're the ones doing the work, uh, uh, safer to provide them with the information they need in real time to try to arrest people, uh, who are committing crimes. Um, i- i- it's it's just, it's a game changer. It's it's like when I first, uh, uh, I I remember having a conversation several years ago with, uh, with another captain, when I was a captain at the time, about the use of drones. And I I kind of poo-pooed the idea, and this is six years ago, uh, maybe eight years ago. Um, and and, you know, thought, you know, how are you going to deploy them, all these other things? Now, I I'll be honest with you, I can't imagine us not having drones. We use drones three or four times a day uh, to find missing people, to look for criminals, to try to find evidence, to, uh, 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 use to, uh, um, help, uh, do accident scenes, uh, uh, to talk to people that are barricaded in houses. Um, we we use the technology so much now that to imagine us not having them would almost be akin to us not having handguns. Um, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense anymore. And I think as we utilize this technology and as Ms. Green talked about, now we can use our drones with the real-time crime center. Um, I don't know that we have the capacity to launch drones at the sound of a gunshot, but, um, there's ways we can use this technology through Genetech software to allow us to push that information out to other people. I think at the end of the day, what's going to happen is at some level, except for the smallest of departments, there's going to be real-time crime center type things at every department because, uh, the it's it's just going to be that game-changing thing. It's, uh, it's the, it's the next leap forward in in law enforcement in in technology.
Well, um, one of the things that I found pretty interesting in all of it, you know, a lot of these were as young as eight years of having the system in place and some of them were as old as twelve years of having the system in place. And then I look at the, um, up to date, twenty twenty-three, uh, most crime-ridden cities in America and four of them are highly rated in the top ten. And the other ones are still listed highly up there. So that was my concern, you know, we have, um, we put this in place and yet we they still have really high crime rates. I mean, St. Louis is number one in the country and they've had theirs for, um, ten years now.
Right, but I, uh, are you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Yeah, so I I'm just saying, when I say we're looking, the community is looking for solutions. Um, and if they're putting these programs in place and they're still have high rates of crime, that doesn't seem like a solution. And so how do we sell this to the constituency that we're going to make this investment? Because at the same time, even though you're detecting a lot of this stuff, are you able to make arrests on a lot of the things? Are you able to convict? That's what they're looking for. That's what the constituents like looking for. They're looking for arrests and convictions.
That that's a great question. Uh, what I can control is the portion of the criminal justice system I'm responsible for. And that is investigating crimes and trying to, uh, arrest the the offenders, uh, and and do the best job we can, given our staffing to protect the people that we serve. And that's the portion of the criminal justice system I can control. What I can tell you is, from my perspective, as a police officer with nearly thirty years of experience, the system that we're talking about, even phase one, it's not a crime prevention system. But what it is, is a tool that allows us to do our job more effectively, to do it safer and to collect evidence that we can use at trial against the offender, hopefully resulting in the very conviction that you're you're asking about. I can't account for all the different factors and 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 your point is well-taken as far as the the crime in some of those cities. I can't account for all of the factors that lead to that. Um, and I can, I'm not going to sit here and tell you if we, uh, set and stand up the real-time crime center in March that we're not going to have any gun violence in Pueblo because that's just, that's just not genuine. What I can tell you is it will provide us the information to pro- to protect our officers as they respond to these incidents. It will give us the information in near real time. And it will allow us, depending on the systems that we add to this system, whether through a business owner giving us access, a homeowner giving us access or or using the ALPRs or surveillance system, it will give us evidence that we need to help prosecute the people that are doing these crimes. And I think by doing that is how we lower crime because it's a real simple formula. Bad guys in jail equals less crime. It it just, it just really is that simple. And this is one more tool that we can use. And when you look at our department now, uh, with our manpower issue, this is like a force multiplier. It helps my officers be safe as they're responding. As Ms. Green talked about, it gives us access to tools that we can use during an active shooter incident if God forbid, something like that happens here in Pueblo. And it allows us to collect evidence that we can use to prosecute those people that are committing the crimes. And I think that's how we put a a dent into some of the very things that you're talking about.
And that's why I wanted to open the conversation and go a little deeper because, um, sometimes when we put programs like this in place, there's an expectation that we can't really meet because without, um, you know, something changing with, you know, the arrests, um, you know, the different types of sentencing, the, um, prosecution and the conviction. We're all, we're back at square one, unfortunately. And so I want, I would like the constituency to understand it, that when we're investing in this, it's not the cure-all that we're looking for right now.
And and in fairness, what I would say is there's no one thing that is the cure-all.
No.
It's a, it's a tightly knit system that works together. And again, uh, I'm I'm responsible for the, uh, law enforcement side of that system, not the, not the judicial.
Yeah, and like I said, I just opened the conversation so that they're not pointing fingers back at you once we get the system in place going. Uh, I thought, you know, we were going to reduce crime here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Counselor Flores?
You know, this is, to me, it's a, it's a risk management, uh, issue in that I see the potential of it, uh, helping our police officers be safer, number one. Uh, number two, uh, on the issue of whether it's going to work or not, uh, you're not asking us to commit for fifty years here. You're asking us to to use it as a tool. Um, and I'm assuming that we're going to be getting lots of data over the next year, two years, three years. And we can make a judgment, uh, in the future, in the short future as to whether or not it's working or not. I mean, that's that's the way we should be doing thing is using data and information. And in this particular case, with the new technology, uh, that this this is, uh, has and the potential of of using, uh, this technology. It it appears to me that, uh, you know, that that we have to try it as a city, especially when you have all of the other you know, mounting problems with not being able to find police officers with with the shortages that we have that we have to start using technology and, uh, uh, in in that method to try to try to help the situation. One of the questions I had, I know years ago, Pueblo, uh, we tried putting substations in other parts of the city. And it it seems to me that that now that we're going to be isolating, uh, as as a, as a process of isolating certain sections that that maybe that idea should come forward again on the idea that you're going to be not only getting real-time information, but that you're going to be a couple of miles, maybe three miles closer to the to what's happening. But I I'm I'm just, I know that the other issue never worked in the in the past. But are you saying that it's not going to work either at this?
I, it would not be my recommendation to establish substations in the the city of Pueblo geographically as we know it now. And I and I'll try to explain why. Uh, we can get from just about anywhere. Uh, it just about, we can get to just about anywhere in town from our current station in less than ten minutes. Um, when you start looking at growth of the city into the future, uh, you know, uh, for example, uh, several years ago, they had annexed part of, uh, uh, Overton Road, Old Pueblo Road up north and that big annex. That to me is where it makes the most sense to start thinking about substations is when you're talking about, you know, greater distances uh, uh, away from where our central station is. And I think that was one of the issues that we had with the substations in in different parts of town as they are established or as they were established at the time is that the officers were so close to the station, they just, they just came to the station. When you, when you, uh, develop, like, if you look at places like Denver, Colorado Springs, uh, in Aurora, larger places where they have precincts or 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 whatever they call them, uh, uh, substations, they're a greater geographical distance out in order to patrol those outer areas. And what ends up happening is you assign a watch commander over that area and the officers, when they report to work, report to the substation. They don't come back to headquarters. And so it would, it would, we would really, in my opinion, and I know that there are others that 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 really want the substations in in our current community. But I think it would be a, I don't think it would be successful. I think what you really need to do is as the city grows outward and there's all kinds of room for the city to do that, you start establishing, uh, substations as far out as you can in that in that growth, knowing that it's going to build further out. And that's where it makes the most sense because it's not cheap to build a substation. And if you don't have the supervision and everything else going on at that substation, then it's just not used the the way that it ought to be, in my opinion. I'm open to ideas, but that that that's where I I fall on it now.
Right, thank you.
I'm going to go first, Counselor Mastry, and then Counselor Tencio.
Just to be clear, you have that extra seven hundred and fifty thousand to maintain that, the yearly maintenance on that, that, um, the crime center in your budget or are we needing to make sure, because we're doing budgetary, um, allocations now? Or you're needing an additional seven hundred and fifty?
That would be additional, uh, additional monies for our budget. We don't have that budgeted now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I remember when we tried substations, Chief, and I think there was a different system of de- deployment in terms of the police officers in town. I don't remember what system was called, but the system you have now is more more attuned to the to the needs of the, uh, community, I think.
Yeah, we had, uh, we were a quad-based, uh, yeah, now we're back to beats like the old days.
Yeah, I like the idea of beats much better and and I think that's more, they're more accessible to the neighborhoods, so, um, and they didn't really work with the quad system type thing, so, uh, that's why we kind of discontinued it. And I was one of the promo proponents of having, uh, substations, so, uh, I I kind of had to eat my words after they didn't, uh, weren't as successful as we wanted. But I think it was because of the quad system and now the beat system is much better. Thank you, sir.
Chief, uh, maybe I missed it in the budget, but are we getting two shot spotters, given that the radius is only three miles?
Well, I, you know, I don't, I don't want to go into a whole lot about how the system works, but the the agreement that we have talked about with with, uh, sound thinking is a three-mile coverage area that we can break down into a two mile and a one mile. It doesn't have to be three contiguous miles.
Oh, okay. So we're good with one shot spotter broken up to the south side and the east side?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Are we going to see this on the next first reading or where is this in the process?
Uh, with, uh, council's con- um, consensus, it it will go directly to, I think, uh, one of the city attorneys, Mr. Wagner, is working on, uh, compliance with the ARPA regs right now through his review and we're waiting for your direction, uh, to move forward with, it will be a resolution as it's an internal department spin.
Counselor Tencio?
Yeah, Chief, uh, I think three of your officers and myself are going to Louisiana in September to s- to a, uh, trade show for real-time crime center. Can we kind of wait until after they come back and give a report? Uh, they might bring back some information that, uh, is relevant.
Uh, that's, that's money talk. I don't.
Uh, my point is that, uh, we're going to do kind of investigative work of other, uh, there's going to be all kinds of, uh, companies there that provide this service, so, uh, we might as well examine as many as we possibly can.
One thing I, one thing I would say is that we we, uh, um, have you, the the system we're looking at is the one that's used by, uh, New York. Uh, and maybe, uh, Phil can can speak here, uh, from Genetech, the the organizations that use their system, Albuquerque, I believe, uh, uses their system, um, and and they're all.
New Orleans, New Orleans is one of the cities that uses our system, but but again, good evening and thanks for the opportunity. Um, but yes, there's companies, there there's over three thousand cities, probably across the US, that use Genetech that, um, at various sizes. We have cities that, you know, might might have, you know, fifty thousand or sixty, less, um, residents than than what you have in City of Pueblo. We have cities the same size. We have universities that have the term crime center is sort of just a term of of basically taking all this data and put into a single place. But there's universities that have the same type of approach. They might only have two or three people in a in a crime center. So there's various sizes of, um, entities that use technology like this and it does kind of scale, depending on how large the city is. The the product is scalable to determine, you know, how many resources you have and then, you know, depending on how large the city is, the, the product is scalable to determine, you know, how many resources you have and then, you know, funding and things like that to to scale. So I know there was some discussion of cities that might, might have tens of millions of dollars, whatever their case is, much larger deployments, um, compared to what you're, you're looking at, just by the, the footprint of the city and amount of resources, um, that they have, but it's a lot, a lot of instances of.
The, the other thing I would add is, one of the reasons why we really wanna go with the, the Genetech system is number one, they're, they're a, uh, government-approved vendor through our High Point Networks, um, who, who we work with. They are also the system that the, that the city has moved to for door access and other things, so the using the same real-time crime center would allow us to control door access across the city as that si- as that system, uh, uh, breaks out. And a- a- as, as, uh, Phil noted, there are a lot of organizations our size and smaller, or our size and bigger that are using this system. So I don't know, what I would say is if you're going to, or when you go to, uh, New Orleans for the, uh, for the meeting, really what it's gonna do is just bolster what we've already said as far as the system and how, how we use it. My recommendation, and it's merely a recommendation, is that we don't wait for that trip to, to make this decision. But that is council's, uh, uh, decision to do and they're in your prerogative, sir.
No, I was pointing it out that we were going and, uh, I, I have all the confidence in the world in you, Chief, in, in that you're making the, the right decision, you're the, you're the expert. Uh, I'm not gonna second guess anything that you're gonna be doing because, uh, like I said, I have confidence in that you're gonna do the right thing.
Thank you, sir. And I think Lori has something as well, if you don't.
Well, I just wanted to add and, and it is, we looked at this for over a year and a half and we looked at various systems and there are a lot of nice systems out there. Um, the interesting thing about this system is the ability to integrate all of the disparate systems that we're looking to help the police department provide and be able to pull up on screen and manage. And Genetech has those integrations a lot better than some of the other systems that other agencies use. Um, some of the ones that we looked at are great overlays to existing systems. The interesting thing about what PD has selected is the fact that we're gonna bring in a system without an overlay because we don't have the equipment in place now, but the integrations will already be there for us. So they work very closely with a lot of our vendors already in process and they're willing to work with a lot of the vendors that we are currently either moving to or implementing now, that'll build that and have that ready for us to go as we start to stand that up. So those integrations, which a lot of the agencies have had to either develop themselves or bring up from the ground, which adds to the cost as you, as you brought up. Um, you know, this system will be able to just be ready to have that in place. So we cited on the fact that the larger agencies do this and the integrations are there and they're gonna be a little farther advanced than trying to write the integrations and everything else that we need, so I hope that helps a little bit.
Now, like I said, I have all the confidence in the world in you guys, you know, you know exactly what you're doing, uh. I'd like it much bigger, but it depends on what the finances determine what we can do to, that I realize that.
Counselor Mastry?
Well, when I was doing my research, Chihuahua, Mexico was number five in the top twenty cities in Mexico to, for foreigners to never step foot in, because it's so dangerous, I'm just putting that out there.
Um, so given the timeline then and given Chief's recommendation, are we good to move forward with this as a resolution at the next first reading?
Uh, the resolution will be one reading, but it will likely be September twenty-fifth, is that correct? Yeah, so we can't make the nine eleven.
September twenty-fifth then, for a resolution on consent.
Yes.
Counselor Mastry? Counselor Flores?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Counselor Tencio, Counselor Graham, Counselor Martinez Ortega, no. I think with the majority of council, we're good to move forward. I appreciate your staff's time, that was a lot of questions, so thanks, Ms. Lori, and thanks, Chief, for taking all of that and thanks, thank you for our guests for joining us via Zoom. Um, that concludes the public portion of our, um, work session today. I will now take a motion to go into executive session.
Uh, pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren four of the Colorado revised statutes, I move that this city council executive committee meeting of the city council of the city of Pueblo adjourned and upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members present, reconvene an executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property or other property interests for a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions for determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators for warming shelter alternative comparison as authorized by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren A, twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren B, and twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paren four, paren E.
All right, that's a motion, that's a second. All those in favor for going to executive session, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, seeing none, I adjourn to go into executive session.
I, George Hipolite, acting as counsel for the City of Pueblo, uh, City Council, in this executive session pursuant to section twenty-four, six, four oh two, D point five, two B. Uh, have determined that no record will be kept, uh, for portions of this executive session following this statement, because in my opinion, discussions constitute privileged attorney-client communications pursuant to section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B of the Colorado revised statutes.